All right, we're going to go ahead and call the Castle Hills Specialty City Council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. We have Mr. Isbrand joining us virtually and everybody else is present. We have a quorum. We're going to go ahead and proceed with the invocation. Mr. Isbrand, would you like to lead us virtually?
Certainly. Heavenly power, please be with us tonight as we're guided through these challenging times. Please watch over all the people of Castle Hills, of our greater community and of our world as we struggle with the difficult questions and the need for science to help guide us. Please be with us as a city council tonight as we work in the best interests of our community and with a commitment to service to all. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. And Mr. Joyce, will you lead us in fudge allegiance? Thank you so much, gentlemen. I don't think we have any citizen comments. Let me just check my email. I don't see anything.
I have none, Mayor.
Mr. Rapley?
I have none.
None? Okay. We will proceed to new business presentation discussion on municipal debt issuance and preliminary analysis of streets and drainage CIP by SAMCO Capital, the city financial advisors. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. As you well know, council, earlier this year, we went out for proposals for financial advisors and the council selected SAMCO. We today have Mr. Andrew Friedman here from SAMCO who will give us a presentation. And I know we've discussed about the possibility of looking at borrowing for streets and drainage down the road, as they'd say. He's here to give you a presentation to what that process may look like or will look like if we move forward with the notice of intent to borrow the necessary funds to do these projects. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Freeman from SAMCO.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members. Good to be in front of you. Handed out a presentation before you all to go over. One of the things that Ryan and Laura and I visited about early on was the need to, Castle Hills does not have any debt, hasn't tried to go to the market or sell debt in quite some time. So to get an overview of what your borrowing options are, the pros and the cons of each of those different types of securities, and then dig into the projects before you all for your consideration and how we might go about financing that. So I'm going to dive right in. I would encourage you, any questions, stop me and I'm happy to go into more detail or have a discussion about it. The first slide, and I don't know, the council member that's on Zoom.
Councilman Isbrand, he has a copy of the presentation.
The first type of security available to cities to finance are general obligation bonds. General obligation bonds are authorized by the voters at the uniform election dates, which are in May or November of each year. Taking it to the voters, they approve it, you have the authorization to finance that project at your choosing. Authorizations don't necessarily expire, but once the Attorney General for the state of Texas feels like the project has exceeded what the, or met the citizens' desire for funding that project, then it would, it might expire. The example would be you get authorized to do $2 million for the streets. You wait 10 years to ever do that. The Attorney General might consider that that's expired. They weigh in on that on a case-by-case basis. Typically, when a city holds a bond election, they take it to market within the next year, probably 95% of the time. General obligation bonds have what we call the full faith and credit of the city. It's backed by your ad valorem taxes. It is generally your lowest cost of borrowing because you're making a pledge of ad valorem taxes and repayment of that bond. And so it's the, and it's typically used to fund general improvements within the city, streets, city hall, assets of that nature. They are not used to fund enterprises of the city such as a water and sewer system or an electric utility, gas utility, things of that nature, things that I know we're not dealing with here at Castle Hills. In order to call a bond election, there are costs involved. Whether that bond election is successful or not, and depending on when you call that bond election, whether you have other elections going on with the county, the cost varies from place to place, be anywhere from $15,000 to $30,000 in order to carry a bond election. And that's before you get into actually issuing any debt. So it's, it's not necessarily a free or riskless avenue to go down. Moving to the next page, the second type of security is revenue bond. A revenue bond doesn't require an election because a revenue bond is not secured by your ad valorem taxes. It's secured by an enterprise such as a water or sewer utility. And because of that, and it's backed by a business enterprise, it's not necessarily, it doesn't need to go to the voters because the utility or the enterprise has to prove out its financial wherewithal in order to be able to sell those bonds. It's viewed as more of a business decision. And ad valorem taxes are specifically not allowed to be used in repayment of those bonds. Because of that, they carry a higher interest rate. It's a little bit riskier for the investor to invest in a water and sewer bond where we might have a very wet spring and you don't generate the revenues in that utility that you might be expecting. So that carries a higher interest rate. They also carry more stringent, what we call bond covenants, requirements that a city enter into as so long as those bonds are outstanding. Some of those being a debt service reserve fund where you have to build up another pot of money that can never be touched so long as those bonds are outstanding, equal to the average annual debt service of that debt. And there are additional bonds tests in order to be able to issue more debt where you would have to generate net revenues in excess of one and a quarter times your debt service. And what that ultimately, both of those ultimately require is that a city set higher rates than it needs in order to satisfy bondholders. We're not generally in favor of that because that's money that's set aside or being generated above and beyond what's required to run that utility and pay debt service. The third option, and this is, I tend to view it as a bit of a bridge between revenue bonds and general obligation bonds, is called a certificate of obligation. A certificate of obligation doesn't require a bond election, but voters still retain that right of referendum. The reason for that is if you have a project, you want to finance with a certificate of obligation, you would adopt a notice of intention resolution. That resolution would get, that resolution outlines the projects to be financed, a not-to-exceed amount of that potential borrowing, and it outlines the date in which the council would, would vote on the sale of those certificates of obligation. That notice is then published in your paper for two consecutive weeks. It's put on your website for a minimum of 46 days. After that petition period has run its full course of 46 days, then the council can legally take action to, to sell those certificates of obligation so long as no petition is submitted by a group of citizens. And that number of citizens that's required is very low threshold, 5% of the qualified voters. So it really doesn't take much to force, and that petition would force the city to hold a certificate of obligation election at the next uniform election date. The certificates of obligation are backed by ad valorem taxes primarily with a secondary pledge of one of your enterprises. Typically, it would be a water and sewer system for most cities. And we can, and we have other sources here that we can use. And because of that, we're able to sell certificates of obligation at the same interest rate that we would a general obligation bond. So you're still getting that lowest cost of borrowing. Investors like it because it carries two revenue pledges, one ad valorem tax, the other from an enterprise of the cities. Another lesser-used security, moving on to the next page, is a tax note. Tax notes have a maximum maturity of seven years. Because of that, it's hard to finance a whole lot of project if it has to be paid off in seven years. So they're typically used to fund fleet vehicles and they can be used for really any, any, any need. Most often, we see them used to finance fleet vehicles, smaller projects that have a shorter useful life. There's no election required. They're not subject to referendum or petition by the, by the citizens. But again, they're, it's hard to get a whole lot done with a tax note. They are the quickest, they're the quickest security to issue because there aren't the bond election needs of waiting till one of the uniform dates, uniform election dates, or having to wait through a petition period of 45 days. So you could typically move through a tax note issuance in a course of 30 days if you really wanted to, where others take between six months and three months from start to finish. Moving on to the next page, the pros and cons of a certificate of obligation. And different parts of the state, and certain states don't have, this isn't an option, but the, the state legislature adopted the CO Act in 1971 to give cities the ability to fund projects through a certificate of obligation. Some of those reasons for doing so, it's less costly to go and issue certificates of obligation than it is to issue general obligation bonds. You're still getting the most, the lowest interest rate that you can out in the market and without having to take on those onerous bond covenants such as creating a debt service reserve fund and incurring the additional bonds test when you want to go and issue more debt down the line and set those higher rates. And you can also fund multiple projects at one time. On a certificate of obligation, you can fund general fund projects that you intend to pay back with ad valorem taxes. You could fund drainage projects that you intend to use drainage fees, or you could sell them as one security, incur one cost of issuance, the bond investor sees one debt issuance. And internally, we can view those as multiple projects. We can amortize things over different time periods. We often will sell 20-year certificates of obligation out into the market. Internally, we might have schedules where we're financing a series of fleet vehicles, police cars, fire truck that have a useful life of 10 years. And so the debt service looks front-loaded because we're amortizing each of those projects over its useful life and only selling one security. So less cost of issuance, a little bit more efficient. The cons of certificates of obligation, depending on how you look at this, and people who do not like certificates of obligation will bring this up, you're getting less input from the voters. And so what we always encourage, and one, I would, I would say that there's a very low threshold that would stop the issuance, if you see a 5% of your qualified voters signing up on a petition can, can force it to an election. We always encourage projects for certificates of obligation based on the needs and not the wants of the city. Building a new city hall, consider that more of a want than a need. Fixing dilapidated streets or creating drainage infrastructure to help move water away from people's homes, those might be considered more of a need and more appropriate for certificates of obligation. And so we always encourage considering those perspectives when determining, you know, what the best security is to go out into the market. And this isn't a type of financing, but on to the next page, a reimbursement resolution. The timing of letting projects and taking on the risk of, of taking on debt before you can take bids on a project creates a time gap that's often not advantageous to the city. And one of the tools that you all can use to help bridge that is to use your excess reserves, your fund balance to help you get through a period, incur those soft costs, determine more about a project before you go and take on that debt. And so, and it's for your consideration later on in the meeting, the adoption of a reimbursement resolution. A reimbursement resolution simply allows a city to say that it intends to reimburse itself down the line from bond proceeds or debt proceeds up to a period going back from the adoption date, 60 days, and out into the future, 18 months, so that you can start to spend on a project and start paying people before you go to the market. It helps with timing. And that's one of the things that's before you all this evening. It doesn't obligate the city to eventually take on debt. You can simply have the piece of paper. I always tell people, it's more for if the IRS ever comes knocking after we've issued debt and they want to see why you paid yourself back first with bond proceeds. And that we have that, that documentation in the file so that we can prove that we took the appropriate steps to pay ourselves back. And certainly, you all have lots of available funds to move forward with a project with the intention, when you close on a bond or a certificate of obligation, you pay your general fund or wherever the funds came from first, and then you use the rest of those proceeds as you continue to work through the construction process of whatever projects you're working on. So they're a very helpful tool. There's not much to them if you've read through the reimbursement resolution that's, that's in your agenda packet for later on in the meeting. That concludes the, the kind of educational aspect. I'm happy to entertain any questions you all have, if there are any at this time.
Mr. Gregory?
Would it benefit the city? Would it be cost-effective if we bought insurance to ensure a AAA rating if we don't initially get one?
Well, certainly part of the process will be to go to Standard Empores, one of the, the main bond rating houses to get an underlying credit rating. It's hard to know what exactly our credit rating will be since we don't have one outstanding. At this point, I'm assuming we'd be in the AA- to A+ category. There are bond insurance companies that will, for a premium paid upfront, that could be wrapped into the financing based on the basis points on, on the deal, ensure the timely payment of principal and interest for the bond investors should the city not have the financial wherewithal in any of the next 20 years to make the payments on that debt. Through 2008, or leading up to 2008, there were lots of bond insurers out there and they were all rated AAA. So everybody bought bond insurance and, and went on their, their merry way. Post 2008, there are two bond insurance companies left and they are rated double A. And so our underwriting desk is out in the market, doesn't believe that it's, if you're AA- or better, there's no benefit to buying it. So we'll have to see where that comes out as we work through the process. It's a break-even analysis for us when it comes to pricing, whether or not it's worth proceeding with bond insurance. But the cost of that's built into the deal. And so that's, that's some calculus that we'll do as we, if and when we move forward with a financing.
So I would assume that that's part of the whole process that y'all do your due diligence to ensure that we're getting the most that we possibly can for our dollars?
Absolutely. When it comes to, there's, there's three different methods of sale when it comes to selling any of these types of debt. There's the negotiated underwriting process where the city would select a bond underwriter. And the bond underwriter, you have to remember, is who purchases the debt from the city and then turns around and sells it to their, their customers, whether they're individuals for their retirement accounts, pension funds, insurance companies. It's a, the municipal bond market's a very large one. Where we work, have a fiduciary duty to you all as the city. They have an interest to their client on the other side of the table. You can designate an underwriter and work with them. Certainly, we are in the market on at least a weekly basis. And our underwriting desk, who, who we also rely upon, gives us input as to whether they think the couponing and yields in any given maturity are, are on the money, or if we need to kind of prod the underwriters to, to tighten things up. The other method of sale and the one that we use the most heavily, probably 90% of, of our publicly offered deals is called the competitive method. And we put together an offering prospectus and put it out to all of Wall Street to submit bids at a certain deadline, usually at 11:00 AM the day of your meeting. And we award it to the lowest bid. And we tend to see over the last probably five years where we've really been pushing the competitive underwriting process, two deals that might be two cities, AA+, very similar credits, very similar size, we might do between five and eight basis points better in the competitive market. It removes the politics and creates the greatest level of transparency for the city. Certainly in volatile, in volatile markets, and we've gone through that in March, we had to move back into the negotiated underwriting, negotiated underwriting process because the buyers weren't there and it was taking a lot more work and the, the banks were building in a lot more risk into their bids. But things have smoothed out and we would, we would expect to sell competitively, or that would be our recommendation. The third is when you have a smaller deal, we, what we do call a competitive private placement where we shop it to local, national and regional banks for them to buy and hold for their own account, in which case we also solicit that to, we've got a list of probably 40 different banks. And we've had a great deal of success doing that as well. But it, those banks are typically restricted from purchasing anything outside of typically about 12 years. They really like the smaller stuff like tax notes or 10-year refundings, things of that nature.
Mr. Gregory?
On a private placement or go, a private placement, you could, if you all said tonight, we'd like you to go find a buyer for a million-dollar tax note, I could put, we'd put together a memorandum, send it out. We typically give two weeks. Through COVID, a lot of the better banks like JP Morgan are requiring about three weeks to do their due diligence. A lot of those banks have also been hit with PPP loans. And so they're, they've been stretched then. In a typical market, I would say two weeks for them to take, do their due diligence, submit their best bid and have it before the council then.
Mr. May?
I had a question about the state law on any of these avenues, either the obligation, general obligation bonds, the revenue bonds, or the certificates of obligation. Are there minimums and maximums or any calculus to determine the outer limits of what a municipality can sponsor?
Sure. And that's a good, that's a great question. You're capped at debt that would produce an interest and sinking fund tax rate of $1.50 per $100 evaluation. You would be voted out of office long before you would be able to sell that much debt publicly. And the Attorney General has also taken a separate stance. They probably won't approve at certain levels, but that's the statutory maximum that, that you'd be allowed. This, I'm talking about just the INS side. So that's, and the INS portion of your tax rate is completely separate from your M&amp;O. Where your M&amp;O and you all are going through the budget process now, you may be subject to rollback, things of that nature. Your interest in sinking tax rate is outside of all of those calculations. So even if you get tremendous growth, your debt has to be serviced and you have to set a debt service tax rate accordingly, year in and year out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Paul?
You made a comment a while ago in reference to taking some money and paying this back first on projects that we may already be participating in. Where does that money come from upfront?
If, and cities typically have money held in reserve. Certainly, we recommend, the rating agencies recommend, at GFOAT recommends having a fund balance of at least 25% of your operating expenditures. Cities oftentimes have balances far greater than that.
Well, we're, we're okay. And see, one of the things that's, during the question, of course, this is before the budget process and we don't know what we're looking at in the budget process, but up to this point in time, we're paying for a major project out of our funds. We didn't have to go out and borrow funds. So that's just one project, obviously. I mean, the CIP involves several projects. And so to me, what we would be looking at is something for the future projects and less through our budget process, we find we need additional cash flow because of the circumstances that exist in today's world. And so I guess I'm trying to tie all that together in a bow. It's not quite easy. For example, if I understand this correctly, we can't just tell you, go in the morning, go get this, sell a bond issue for us. If we go with the general obligations, that 30 days prior to, or 46 days that you used, we have to put up what that money's used for, which means we have to specify the projects in which we're shooting for as I read this stuff. Is that correct?
That is correct. The reimbursement resolution really just serves as, as a bridge. It's something that any of us, either in business or personal, you would do, maybe without, you would consider it, but without having to take extra steps. The reimbursement resolution itself is, is kind of covers the city.
It's like another piece of the project. Here's that project. It's a, it's a reimbursement.
As it.
We got this and this.
As it relates to our upcoming discussion about the CIP, you have a pot of money that's going to pay for a project that's currently underway. If you adopt the reimbursement resolution that you're, and the project you're, I think, about to start paying invoices on, adopt the reimbursement resolution, you can hold on to that. And it is a cash flow management mechanism to be able to look at structuring the debt or how we want to, would consider structuring a tax rate and using our other revenue sources such as digital billboards, the sales tax portion for street maintenance, things of that nature. So it's just giving you additional flexibility to, to determine the tax rate that you want, grow into it and consider more holistically with all of the projects over the next, say, 10 years, how you might manage that.
And how is your company, you basically, I see you as just an interim, like a broker. You're taking our needs, going out and finding the money to fill our needs. Am I correct?
Not a, not a broker.
Maybe it's.
Or simply your advisor, a consultant.
Facilitator. That would have been a better word.
Yes, we were absolutely a facilitator in that, you know, working with your finance staff and management. Come to us with, you know, here's a project that we want to move forward with. How can we go about that? What's it going to look like? Where are we going to repay it from? And that's the analysis that we put together. We then take that with your approval to put together an offering document, take you through the ratings process with Standard Empores or Fitch or Moody's, and then ultimately market that security to the investing public and bring that before you all and then help close the transaction, put the money in your bank. We don't buy the debt. We don't represent anybody other than the city. We have a fiduciary duty to the city of Castle Hill.
Is this a proper or improper time to ask then? Are your funds based upon, which you personally, the company issue work for, get repaid based upon the size of the debt?
That is correct. Y'all have, y'all approved our standard municipal advisor contract in, in mid-April. And it's a sliding scale fee based on the par amount of debt borrowed.
Mr. Paul, it was part of the consideration when we were looking at RFPs that had one portion of basically how much, you know, each financial advisor would get based on the, the amount of money we borrowed. So.
I'd like to make one more comment. I'll be quiet. For those who may be listening online, this isn't just an individual. Council previously put out a RFP for requests to have people come to us and tell us about what they're doing, what they will do for us. And you were selected by that council. So it's not like just somebody said, let me go get this guy. I know him and I can come in here and work. So I'm just doing that for people that may be listening. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Paul, earlier this year, that Mr. Friedman's company SAMCO was selected, I believe, out of seven proposals, I think in March, I believe.
Yeah. And, and to also be clear on, on that front, since some of you weren't a part of that council, our fee, your bond attorneys work on a contingent basis. So we only get paid at the end, at the closing of a successful bond issuance. And then we work throughout the year or the years, depending on how long in between. We don't bill by the hour. So we consider ourselves a resource to the city. When you borrow, we get paid. When you don't, you know, that's, that's the risk of our business. And that's okay.
Okay. Do you want to proceed?
Yes, sir. So then getting into the crux of what we're here to discuss this evening, put together two different types of analysis for your consideration. I've reviewed, going back to about March, your streets CIP and your drainage CIP. We took the information that your engineers and outside consultants pulled together from that, visited with Ryan and with Laura about how the city would move forward with funding those projects. And then I put together. those projects, and then I put together for the streets portion, and also for the drainage that we'll get into, but, but we're going to talk about the streets first, what we call a tax rate impact analysis. You have a taxable assessed value of all the property in the city that you levy an M and O tax based upon, do the same thing with any debt that you sell. So I started by looking at, what's your taxable value? What have your taxable values looked like over the last decade? They've grown at an average rate of four and a half percent roughly. We don't know what our taxable values are going to do in tax year 2021 and beyond as a result of COVID. We've been going through some historical levels of growth here in Texas that have been a tremendous boon and allowed for lots of infrastructure projects and the like, but we don't want to bet on growth as we're selling this debt. You all are making promises to your voters, you're making decisions based on the here and now, so I don't want to put together an analysis that assumes we're going to keep growing at four and a half percent in perpetuity, because somebody might get the impression that that's the worst-case scenario that we're going to have. What I've done, and this is what I've called the most conservative approach, and that we've employed for, I'm sure, decades now, is assuming that we're not going to grow at all. This doesn't consider that we lose five percent next year. So, you know, there's always, always a downside, but this has historically been the most conservative approach that we've not run into trouble with. But moving on to this next page, and this is a lot of small numbers, and I apologize, is that tax rate impact analysis. Moving from left to right on that page, you can see the fiscal years, fiscal year 2020 and beyond listed there on the far-left column, and then the freeze-adjusted taxable assessed value in each following column. From there, we look at what the debt service on a twenty-year bond issue issued this summer that we would begin repaying in fiscal year 2021 of three-point-three-three million to start this first phase of the Streets Capital Improvement Project, what that would look like in terms of an interest in sinking fund tax rate, and ultimately, that comes in just below three cents. Now, through that reimbursement resolution that we were talking about, those other pots of money, there's lots of different ways to maybe help buy down that tax rate, because as we start looking into Streets Phase Two, and that's a bigger borrowing, ten million dollars, that tax rate as you follow it year over year climbs to about thirteen cents. Taking on a bit of debt at that point, and it's going to require, based on no growth, thirteen cents of tax support in order to pay that debt down. Now, what this analysis doesn't do, it doesn't assume that we're going to have any growth between now and eternity, and we certainly hope that that's not the case. So as we continue to get growth year over year, that INS tax rate required would decline, and that would be our hope, but this, we feel, gives the, a very conservative view to, to the reader. And then, secondly, the three-point-three-three million is calculated at an assumed interest rate of three and a half percent. That's very, very high. We're selling twenty-year bonds right now for about two-point-two-five percent over twenty years. That's not to say that that's what we're going to be able to sell here at Castle Hills if we proceed later this summer. We don't have, we don't have a, a track record in the market, we don't have a credit rating, so I can't promise where we'll end up, but we will come in under that three and a half percent. So between growth and lower interest on these loans than we're projecting, we'd hope to do better. Got the reimbursement resolution, you have funds sitting in, aside in different funds that could be applied on an annual basis to help bring down that INS tax rate. And so those are offsetting and mitigating factors that can change this analysis. The next page is that same analysis, but only looking at the Phase One, three-point-three-three million, and wanted to do this just to give you a, a more simplified look at what you're considering here this summer of issuing and what that tax rate looks like resulting.
Mr. Paul, can you use your microphone? Please?
Explain the definition of freeze-adjustable taxable.
The freeze-adjusted taxable assessed value is, the, the city offers a freeze to its citizens over the age of sixty-five that freezes their taxes. That only applies to the maintenance and operations portion of your tax rate. So as you go to adopt an INS tax rate, and this is the same for school districts that, that more often have freezes in place, the prorata share of your tax rate that is applicable to the INS tax rate comes back to the, the INS fund, and so it helps offset that debt service.
Define INS again.
Interest in sinking. You have your maintenance and operations tax rate that supports the general operations of the city. The INS is a separate tax rate. The revenues that it produces go to pay the debt service, and they are legally prohibited from being used for any other purpose.
So the valuation of column two is the basic analysis based on today's information on what you feel the assessed values will be? Is that correct?
Correct. Well, that's, the, the 2020 is your certified 2020, and then the 2021 is the latest from Bear CAD values. Now, those are obviously still in fluctuation, because they won't be certifying those for a couple of more weeks. We'll continue to update that, because we're in a tricky spot right now with historical levels of protests across the state is one of the implications of the COVID-19.
But Andrew, you might want to elaborate too, but when you look at this too, this is broken up into a first and second phase. So you're taking roughly three million and ten million, which addresses thirteen million in needs of street work that needs to be done within our CIP.
Correct, correct, and, and, sorry, I should have touched on that. On the, the page behind that has Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One, three-point-three million is this summer. Phase Two would be slated for 2023. And so again, when possible, we like to look at that full capital improvement plan, and I think there's actually more project out there as identified by, by your, your consultants, but to get an idea, as we start down Step One, we'd like to know what the end game looks like, because you don't want to go borrow money, tackle a little bit of the problem, and then be surprised five years from now to say, you know, this isn't what we signed up for. We would have never done that in the first place had we known this was where we're headed in terms of, you know, an untenable tax rate or something like that. So that's the goal here, is to have a full picture of what that CIP would ultimately mean for your finances and your tax rate.
So if we took the three-point-three this summer that you're talking about here, that doesn't necessarily commit as?
Absolutely not, no, sir.
So they're in segments based upon, so you could see how one works, it works out, doesn't work out, then we could move on to the next one, or whatever.
Correct, yes, you're, you're, anytime you borrow debt, or, and, and we're just looking at what this would look like in the future, you're only obligating yourself with that debt issuance at that time, certainly not future debt issuances.
And Mr. Friedman, is there a reason why it's structured the way that it is with three-point-three and then ten million?
That, that was based upon the, the CIP and some changing numbers that, that we've been looking at as recently as this afternoon, in terms of, and Laura may be better equipped to answer that question than I am.
Okay, and my thing is, if, just based on what our need is and the economy's a scale for the particular project to ensure that we're getting as most of the, the most that we possibly can.
You could certainly borrow as much as you possibly want, up to a statutory limit or frankly, much lower than that. The three-point-three million dollars was based on really your CIP and what you could reasonably tackle in this upcoming year. One of the things that, you know, we, we often counsel is borrow money when you need money, not just because it's cheap, and while you might be able to borrow twenty-five million dollars and start on your, your streets projects right now, maybe it's unlikely that you could actually contract out all of that work and expend those funds over the course of three years. Because one of the things, and I didn't touch on this earlier, the IRS, because we're issuing tax-exempt bonds, the IRS wants to see that you've spent eighty-five percent of your proceeds you received from that sale of debt in the first three years. So we don't want to borrow more than we can reasonably tackle. And so that's, also plays into how we structure these issuances, but there's nothing that says you can't borrow more than that. That's what our, our, our conversations between Ryan and Laura and I have.
I think, again, it comes back more to the methodology, because if you look at the CIP, that, you know, when this was put together, you had roughly almost eleven million dollars, and that's almost fifty percent of our streets that needed reconstruction. So that's why kind of we were at the eleven-million-dollar mark, and we were getting more into detail about what projects they may look like, and the three million was based on doing some of the worst streets now that are in the worst condition in the, the CIP right now to tackle those streets before we lose those streets down the road.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes, I'm trying to, I can get a question answered about, maybe it's for Ms. Laura, about what is the total cost, projected cost to CIP for streets and drainage? Do we know?
The total cost of the CIP for streets is twenty-four million, almost twenty-five. Yeah, that, that doesn't, that doesn't cover engineering cost. However, when the CIP was put together at close to twenty-five million, we've since done Antler, and we're currently doing Banyan. That's actually going to take care of close to two million dollars in roadwork that encompasses that twenty-five million dollars.
Okay.
But by doing those two, two projects, we've lessened it by a couple million dollars total, or aggregately, and then in the drainage side, the total needs was sixteen million.
Okay.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, sorry.
Forty-five.
And again.
So it's almost forty-five million dollars total? A little less than forty-five million total?
Yes, sir. And again, by doing the Banyan, we're tackling some of the drainage of that eighteen million right now.
Good, okay, thanks.
Mr. Gregory?
You can get cer, there are certain exemptions, you get your engineer to sign off on, on whether there were extenuating circumstances. It's not, it's not something we're overly worried about. What it gets into then is a, a concept of negative arbitrage, where you're earning more and that money sitting in an account, and you are paying interest on the loan. That goes back to the tax, the nineteen-eighty-six Tax Act, because you had a disparity there where you could go borrow ten million dollars and invest it potentially at a rate that exceeds what you borrowed and, and create an arbitrage opportunity. So it's not something I'm, I'm overly concerned with, but it's something that we want to be mindful of, because what happens, and we've gone through several IRS audits of, and they happen randomly, they're, they're random audits, takes a lot of staff time, and it takes the, your bond counsel, and, and you end up doing some work on it, but you just have to go prove up everything that you did, and, and it just becomes a nightmare, and Laura over there would, would face the brunt of that, and so that's, we want to avoid those when possible. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, or what the extent of that challenge would look like.
Mr. Isbrand, did you have a question?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
All right. So then, moving on, moving to page eleven, get into the Drainage Fund pro forma analysis. Now, drainage-related projects could be funded in whole or in part by revenues generated into the Drainage Fund based on drainage fees, or you're currently booking digital billboard revenues there as well. So stop and take a look at historically what your drainage fund has generated in revenues and expenditures, and for budget year 2020, it was looking to generate about three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars in revenue against no expenditures, and so that is the revenue stream the city then has to bond against. So moving on to page twelve, broke down your drainage CIP, and, and this wasn't arbitrary, but it, it does, it just took a little bit of finessing from me, because we want to try to combine debt issuances when we can. So we're not going to the market over and over again, because that's just your consultants getting paid. We want to try to bring things up to a certain scale and then take it to the market. So came up with a structure of issuing six-point-one-three-five million dollars to fund projects identified as Watershed Two and Three this year as part of this proposed CO, and then just over three million, two-point-six million, and six-point-two million over the next eight years. Now, that's not to say that any of this is set in stone. I could almost guarantee that all of this will change year over year based on greater need or, or just changing circumstances in, in other aspects of, of your drainage CIP, but this is just a, a starting place to start tackling that plan.
Mr. Friedman, have you ever had a situation where the city will partner with different entities, and they put in their portion? And specifically, what I'm speaking of is, and I don't know the watersheds specifically, but much of the water comes from San Antonio, so if we were to do a joint project with the City of San Antonio, Bear County, and Castle Hills, that could potentially alleviate some of the issues that we're having in two of our watersheds. So I just, I didn't know if.
But we've done, I mean, there are many, many instances where you have partnerships or just a group project, you know, multiple parties that are, that are funding a project. They happen, I mean, any number of ways, so that's, that's a very open-ended question. Oftentimes, you might see that, you know, there, there's a project, each party has to come with their money to the table, and so we would be financing that to the extent it's a large enough amount of money that you would go bond for it. Everybody needs to kick in their two million dollars, whatever that number might be. And, and, yeah, otherwise, you're creating, you know, completely separate political subdivisions or entities. City of Shirts and Seguin, who we work with, created the Shirts-Seguin Local Government Corporation, a corporation that they each own fifty percent of, to build a pipeline and develop a well field, to develop their own water supply. So there's any number of ways to, to create and facilitate that, that, that's just going to be a matter of bringing everybody to the table and seeing, you know, what that project is and how, how it would look.
I would assume if we went that, that route, and that mechanism being, say, in a local agreement, it would spell it out, who's responsible for what portion of funding, and it would be to that party to figure out how they would bring that money to the table.
Correct, that's, that's how we most often see it, and you see, I mean, different projects like the MPO-type projects around here, city needs to come up with, with, you know, its designated portion to, you know, receive those funds or to pay in towards that text dot project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So with, with this kind of timeline in mind, again, I apologize for the, the very small numbers here, but put together a pro forma where we look at the drainage revenues that are available for debt service, and then each column to the right of that is the principal and combined principal and interest of each of those series of bonds or debt outlined on the previous page, starting with six-point-one-three-five million in 2020, and then follow-on issuances in 23, 2025, and 2028, to generate a combined debt service over time. So you can see, in 2020, we have the financial wherewithal within the existing revenue stream to support that debt. Once we start layering on more debt, though, we generate a deficit, and I'm looking at the second column from the right, the surplus or deficit of available funds, and you can see by the time you get through your entire issuance in 2028, it's almost a million-dollar hole. So the question before the council will be, and developed over time with staff, where are we going to generate those revenues to ultimately finance all of these projects and generate roughly a million dollars? You can increase your drainage fees, although there's only so much you can really do there, and you've got other pots of money. You've got a Streets, a Sales Tax, Reserve for Streets, Street Maintenance, some of which can be used to support debt, and I would suggest on the, the Street project side, because it's statute, would be statutorily required, but that then frees up other revenues. On the INS side, you've got your digital billboard revenues, which may or may not be very dependable, and then lastly, you've got your interest in sinking tax rate that could support drainage projects, and, and drainage projects are often supported, at least in part, by INS tax rate. And so I added the last column. Above and beyond the, the Streets tax rate that we looked at on prior pages, what this debt service on the drainage would require in additional INS support over time. And so you can see that there to get an idea of what, what it would take to support all of these projects based on that deficit. So still assuming you're using all of your drainage revenues to support debt, how much additional revenue? additional revenue you would need to generate in an INS tax rate to support the rest of the project. These are just starting places. There's nothing that says this is the only way to go about it, but we have to start the discussion somewhere.
Mr. Gregory, did you have a comment? Mr. Gregory, can you use your microphone?
The last column, this figure, is that an addition of point, whatever it is for that particular year, on top of what is already being paid? Or is it a part of what is already being paid?
What do you mean about already being?
Yeah, our rate is what, fifty cents?
Oh, yes, that's, that's on top of what you're already.
It's on top of, not part from. So how, if we have a, if they have a ceiling of a dollar fifty-six, something like that that we can go to.
In a combined rate, it's two fifty.
Oh, combined is two fifty?
For interest and sinking only, you're restricted to a dollar fifty.
Yeah. What's the two fifty for?
M and O plus I, your maintenance and operations tax plus your interest in sinking.
That's combined.
Combined, yes, sir.
Okay.
But again, you're never, you're never realistically going to get anywhere near there.
Can you start talking to residents about this? It boils down to one thing. Do you have the ability, I know you do, I worded that wrong, three hundred thousand dollar average house in Castle Hills? I don't know what the average is, probably two seventy-five, three hundred thousand. But say three hundred thousand dollars, how much would this increase the tax on those houses?
Multiply three hundred times the tax rate any given, any given one of these years to come up with that annual additional tax that it would support. Those are actually tables that I'd created early on and, and we'd struck from the early discussion, but certainly things I can provide to you all. And that is something that is very helpful, especially when you're going through a bond election to say to your voters, you know, by approving this, your taxes to pay for this are going to go up, you know, X many dollars based on your three hundred thousand dollar home.
No, you're saying that people who have their houses, their taxes were frozen, still will participate here to a degree. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Because.
Interest in sinking is, is, is not subject to that freeze.
Yeah, but how you get the money back though? You get it through taxes.
I'm sorry?
You get the money back through taxes.
I'm not sure I'm following that.
How do you get the money back? You get it back by increasing the taxes so that you get the money back to pay off the note.
Oh, yes, sir.
So it's still a tax, that's what I'm.
Yes, it, it's a tax.
Okay. I'm sure I understand that.
Just. One penny of a tax levy.
Mr. Paul, can you use your microphone?
What does that one penny get us? In other words, how much?
We're at sixty, sixty thousand, sixty-two thousand?
Right. I'm talking about if we do a three million dollar situation here, what, what would be the?
Mr. Paul, I, I think what you're trying to figure out is how much would a person have to pay for a three hundred thousand dollar house to cover?
A three million dollar?
Their percentage of the three million dollar note.
I mean, I just think those are basic questions that people are going to ask.
Sure.
Ninety dollars a year.
What, what's ninety dollars a year?
If you.
Okay.
If, yeah, talking about three point, three pennies or, you know, three, the three point three three million dollar street project.
Right.
That would cost a person in a three hundred thousand dollar home ninety dollars a year.
Okay, and let's, let's take that to the next step where the full monte here appears to be about a million dollars, fifteen cents. Would that suggest that for a three hundred thousand dollar house, it would be about four hundred fifty dollars a year?
Correct.
Roughly, I mean, yeah. No, no, I understand Laura, but I just, just understand Mr. Paul's question about the math.
Yes.
And just to clarify, and Mr. Gregory's question earlier, I think you mentioned point five zero as a tax rate, but we actually dropped to the effective, which was the point four eight last year. So we're not at point five zero anymore. Just clarification.
And then again, did the same thing, the streets analysis, we're just looking at 2020 and that following page. It would require, on top of using all of the drainage revenues, you have three hundred and eighty thousand, eighty-nine thousand dollars a year. You would then have to levy just under one penny to support this next issuance. So then to my last page of that presentation, other available sources of revenue. And these are things for your consideration, pots of money that are out there that we can consider allocating to pay the streets portion of the debt, the utility, the drainage portion of the debt, et cetera, et cetera. We have a street maintenance fund that's funded annually by a quarter of a cent of the sales tax collections for street maintenance. Had to get the lawyers working on this one because the, the statute and the creation documents vary from city to city to authorize a, a street maintenance sales tax. We can dedicate those revenues to pay for principal on debt, but we're statutorily prohibited from using those dollars to pay for interest. So that's simple enough breakout that I can do and prove up to the Attorney General so that we can use some of those funds if you want to re, if you want to use them instead of for street maintenance or what I would consider street maintenance of rebuilding these certain streets, we can use that to help offset the tax rate impact of the streets project. We have digital billboard revenues that are currently assigned between two different funds, but one of them is street maintenance, the other is to your, your drainage. Look at using those, you could rededicate them, it's at council discretion in either event, but using those revenues. Now there's a concern about the volatility of those billboard revenues, given that advertising dollars are generally down and, and unknown that we can rely upon those in perpetuity, just the same as our sales taxes. Sales tax, you know, across the state are generally down. Some cities have weathered better than others, but that's a volatile revenue source to rely upon compared to people generally paying their property taxes every year on time. And then the last thing, and, and Laura and I had visited about this in depth over the last several months, we've got a supplemental street and drainage maintenance fund that while I think it's, it's council policy or city policy, you could transfer up to four hundred thousand dollars a year from the general fund and it could be reassigned. I think in reality, it's, it's something like fifty thousand dollars a year is what's truly been available. So there's just, there's various levers that, that you all can pull, not only this budget cycle, but into perpetuity to help manage that tax rate and, and move forward. They're just decisions that are, are before you, not only this cycle, but you'll continue to, to deal with over the next many years as, as we look to fund some of these projects.
Mr. Joyce?
Quick question for Mr. Rappley, please. On the, on the digital billboards, what is the length of the lease or whatever the agreement is with those guys? What is that?
The terms are twenty-five years.
Twenty-five? Okay, thank you. And that increases at two percent a year for that. And it may be, we're working on a, perhaps another billboard coming on stream and there'll be, if that occurs.
The most recent one that was, the most recent one, there was the, 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 each year it goes up, I think, what was it, the two percent?
Two percent.
Two percent throughout the life of the agreement.
So there, there should be, because of the substantial backing of the company, unless the company goes under, there should be substantial increase over this big figure you have here, substantial increase. And we may have one more, at least one more digital billboard to throw into the mix. So.
Absolutely.
These are very, very, very conservative figures as it should be.
Mr. Isbrand, you had a comment?
A, a question on the digital billboards. Is that a flat rate that the companies are providing us or is it based on a percentage of the ad, advertising revenue that they're generating from the board?
Flat rate plus two percent increase a year.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, that up to four hundred thousand a supplemental street, what that is, is that any funds as a surplus to your budget at the year end? The funds will be transferred to the, up to four hundred thousand. So if you only have fifty thousand or you have twenty thousand or you have nothing, there will be, there will be no funds there.
You're, you're absolutely right. I just wanted to highlight that as a potential place and, and it's been, I think, fifty thousand dollars most recently. So that encompasses my presentation to you all. It's a lot of information. And so I'm happy to answer questions if you have them. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them tomorrow and in the weeks and months to come because it's a lot of question, it's, it's a nuanced business that y'all are in. So oftentimes there's no one correct answer and sometimes it requires getting a lot of different people involved to, to answer those questions like multi-party participation in drainage projects. Certainly, you know, that's unique.
Andrew, can you elaborate a bit? Tonight, obviously, we have the reimbursement of resolution and that's the intent to hopefully basically borrow for the project that's currently underway. But Tuesday night, we have the notice of intent. So can you talk about the notice of intent and what those steps look like? And starts that process?
Yes, so, so tonight, reimbursement resolution before you all to, to solidify your ability to pay yourselves back should you choose to move forward with the financing between now and the next eighteen months. And so that's a, a risk less piece of paper to adopt, keep in a file, should anybody come knocking, it just leaves the most options open for the city. Next Tuesday, and I apologize, I won't be able to be here, so I did want to, to discuss this with you and, and this is a, a good opportunity to, to talk through any questions or concerns regarding the issuance process for certificates of obligation. Next Tuesday would begin your first legal step to issuing certificates of obligation if you all choose to. That notice of intent resolution outlines the use of the proceeds. It's currently drafted to encompass streets, street projects, which includes curb and gutter and, and the lawyers include a lot of verbiage within there because frankly, learn over time that there's no telling what you might find or what you may need to address. And also drainage projects that would be separate from the street projects as y'all have various drainage construction throughout the city that are not contiguous with, with the streets. Then in that notice, you're also outlining when you plan to sell these certificates of obligation. I don't have the timetable in front of me, but I think it's September ninth? The clo- okay, I apologize, I didn't have that in my, in my head at the moment. After you adopt that notice of intention next Tuesday, that notice runs in your paper of record, and I'm not sure what your paper of record is here aside from the Express News because I know that they're generally very expensive to run in, but it runs in your paper of record once per week for two consecutive weeks. It also must be published on the city's website, that notice of intent, for a minimum of forty-six days. So we have to let forty-six days pass. We try to bring them to regular council meetings, again, for transparency, while you could hold a special meeting at any time and approve the sale of certificates. We want to offer the maximum amount of transparency for concerned citizens and people to be aware of. So we'll bring it to your next regular meeting after that forty-six day period is run, assuming no petition or anything has been submitted. We would have the bids in hand at that point. So at the notice of intention meeting next Tuesday, you're starting that legal process. You're not bound to proceed with that process, even if you approve the notice. It doesn't bind the city to take on that debt come August when we bring those bids or September when we bring those bids back to you. Once we get to that bond sale or the CO sale date after that forty-six day period, once we have the bids in hand, we know exactly what the debt service looks like. We've updated the analysis in here and come up with a, a final game plan of what it's going to cost. Only then are you voting to approve or disapprove that certificate of obligation and legally bind the city to that debt. You can cancel it at any time before then. The only cost that the city would incur between now and then, if you choose to pull the plug or it's unsuccessful, is the rating fee from Standard and Poor's or any of the rating houses. And that number is probably around fifteen thousand dollars. So if we stop the sale before we go to the rating agencies where we hold a, a call with them and answer a lot of questions, which is typically three weeks before the sale, it's all no harm, no foul. After we have that rating call, you're on the hook for that rating fee. And I like to just put that out there at the outset, well, we would never charge you, your bond attorneys won't charge you, Standard and Poor's doesn't care.
And, and this, in the same vein of transparency, is there anything, I, I'd like to let the voters, the citizens know what streets would be potentially impacted by the work. Is there anything that says you don't want to do that or you cannot do that?
There, there's nothing that says you can't do that. I can think of a few reasons why it may create or politicize the issue by outlining what streets, but that's certainly y'all's prerogative to go out there and identify what, what those streets are. So it's entirely upon y'all. There's nothing that says you can or shouldn't.
I think again, that's why we're looking at and using the CIP is that methodology to take care of the worst streets by the scores, starting with the twenty, thirty percentile of those reconstructed streets and working our way up. That's kind of the methodology and the data used by the engineers.
And we see that relied upon most frequently because people want to see that their street's being done. And that may not be the, the, the greatest need. And so it is nice to rely upon what's been identified.
And then that's exactly my intent. But that way, we, historically, there was an issue we had years back where they tried to take debt without as much information as they could. So my intent, my hope would be that we could put as much out there so there's no question as to what the city is going to do with the money once we get it, even if it is a part of the plan, the plan is published. Mr. Gregory?
Uh, two things. First of all, we've had two bond issues. One bond issue delineated every single street that needed to be done. Another one said, well, just give us the money and we'll figure out where we're going to spend it. Well, the latter one went down in flames with about seventy-five percent of the people voting against it. The other was tried to be passed in the middle of the great recession and I think it lost by forty-nine to fifty-one percent. My question is the tax notes. Can tax notes be issued for say three or two or four or five years? It doesn't have to be seven.
Any, any period of time, up to seven years. We've done one year full of tax notes. I think we're doing one right now as a matter of fact.
The, so we have, and I just don't know whether we would save any money, but we have one outstanding large, we're paying for the fire truck. And I just don't know the interest. I, I can't recall what the interest rate was.
This is a capital lease you all have?
At least to own.
Yeah, a, a cap, a cap, capital lease.
Yeah, it was to buy.
Yeah.
And I forget what the interest rate was. In fact, I just don't recall, it was several years ago. But that would be the type of thing that if we wanted to, if there's only say four, five years left on that.
That's a, it's a great point. We could certainly look at refinancing it. One of the things, I've, I've gone through this map many, many times with, with various clients. I'll be forthright and tell you, I don't like capital leases. First and foremost is a capital lease has to be accounted for on the maintenance and operations side of your budget. subject to rollback. So as your tax rate gets compressed and puts pressure on your budget, you've got a capital lease expenditure on there that could have otherwise been financed at almost always a lower interest rate and held on the INS side of your tax rate. So all things being equal, it's better to be, have it over there. What I've found in terms of refinancing capital leases is because of the cost of issuance, it's not worth doing at an amount typically less than 450 to 500,000. Because you've got.
Well, that's.
It very well may be. And I'm working through, I've refinanced, I'm refinancing a number of water meters at another community around San Antonio that was a capital lease at a rate of 3.38%. And we'll likely lock in a nine-year rate at 1.15% and save $150,000 by keeping the payment stream the same, just a lower, lower rate. But tax notes are better than a capital lease. And when we see this often from the AMI water meters and different things that get pitched by the vendors, they're, they're secured, a capital lease is only secured by the asset that you're leasing. And so there's always a risk, as capital leases are subject to annual appropriation, that a future council might say, we're not going to appropriate the money to pay this lease. Come take your fire truck back. They don't want that because that fire truck's not worth, it's depreciated, it's not worth what it once was. For a water meter, certainly not worth as much as it was before they put it in the ground. So they build in to their interest rate the risk to support that. A tax note, COs, GO bonds are based solely upon the full faith and credit of the city. It's a much lower interest rate. So I always advise and caution against, nothing wrong with the capital leases themselves. There's just better tools in your toolbox to go out and secure those same assets.
So the council's aware on the fire truck. We programmed the principal and interest for the second year in this year's budget. So we'll be paying the second year. And then we'll have five years left as we adopt next year's to make the payment.
Principal was about a million dollars, if memory serves me correct.
I think 500,000 in cash and then financed 500 something.
That's right.
I thought it was on a seven-year note after we paid the $500,000, not at least purchased. I thought it was just a straight out purchase. And we liked it, and we liked it, the difference between five years and seven years. And seven years, the interest was no big deal.
If council's interested, I can send out information on it. But it, it's a seven-year note based on the 500,000 and change.
And I'm happy to run the math for you and tell you if it's something that's worth pursuing or not.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions from Mr. Friedman? Thank you so much.
Okay. Again, I apologize. I won't be able to be here next Tuesday. Tom Spurgeon, your bond counsel, the attorney that does all of the bond work, will be here to answer any questions about that. He's obviously not versed in the financial side of what we've specifically been talking about. But I'm certainly, I'm always happy to come back up and be before the council.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number two, discussion and possible action on resolution number 2020-07-09, expressing official intent to reimburse with tax-exempt obligation proceeds costs incurred to construct street improvements and drainage improvements in the city. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as Mr. Friedman discussed, this is the intent of doing this reimbursement resolution. And I also want to preface what I didn't mention, previous agenda item, that during this process, you know, the reason why it has Councilman Gregory's name as also treasurer is Mr. Friedman and I and Ms. Vigans and Councilman Gregory went through to discuss the rationale of looking at borrowing this process and the idea of doing a reimbursement resolution for the current Banyan project. Because I think if we had already had a, or had already borrowed as a city, this would have been a perfect project to borrow for the Banyan project based on the level of the infrastructure work being done and the time to pay that back. So the idea was, if, as Mr. Friedman said, we were able to issue these notices and borrow the money down the road, this would reimburse us back, put money back into our street and drainage funds to be able to, as he said, pay a portion back or be able to use money for other projects as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. May?
Well, it just seems to me that we're going to be negligent if we don't put the city in a position to be nimble in the next 18 months. So I'm going to propose that the city council, I move that the city council approve resolution number 2020-07-09.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. May and a second by Mr. Gregory. Discussion? Mr. May, I think you said it perfectly. I think this puts us in a very good situation to be able to leverage our options as necessary to ensure that we can continue with our capital improvement projects. Mr. Isbrand, you have a comment?
I do not.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Unanimous. Thank you, council. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Look forward to getting to work with all of you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will be conducting the budget work session, our first budget work session. And we'll start with the preliminary revenues. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Councilman Isbrand has a copy of the presentation. So I'll kind of run through this pretty quickly here. Any input? Ms. Vigans is here to answer any questions as well. But what we want to do is kind of highlight our preliminary revenues and then look at where we're at now and then how we're looking to put the revenues for next year's budget together best on circumstances from that standpoint. But I want to run through that, you know, we have the sales tax, mixed beverage, franchise fees, court fees, permits, license, code enforcement, police, fire revenues, garbage collection revenue, and passport. Then after we get through the revenues, we kind of want to hear from y'all as city council to kind of give us any guidance or any input on what you'd like to see or some type of direction on helping us as staff move forward as we put this adopted budget to bed later this year. And then let you know about the meeting schedule. So I wanted to go through real quick on the preliminary revenues here. This is page two, sales tax. Currently, we budget 1.1 million. The five-year average was about $1,058,000. As Ms. Vigans had mentioned in previous presentations, March and May included an $83,000 audit payment, which that came from the Controller's Office. And I guess by my discussion with Ms. Vigans, that that is either somebody wasn't paying or they realized that they're in Castle Hills and we should have been getting that sales tax collection all along. So that's actually a nice little addition to what we thought for unexpected revenue based on the current situation with, with the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic revenue, we're heading towards 1.2 million. So we would have been above the projected amount. Current collections through July trending decreases compared to this time last year. June decline of about negative 23% or 22,000 in April. July had a slight decline of about negative 11% or 11,000. Based on this trend, staff, we are currently estimating about $1 million, hopefully by the end of the year, which essentially puts about $100,000 below our projected revenue. 2021 sales tax anticipated projection, obviously, we have here if closures continue. But as our, you know, this is a fluid situation. So I would say if it fluctuates, this closure, if we stop and go with the economy and staying at home and businesses closed, that's what I talked about fluctuating. But we are looking at trying to project about 925,000 next year as a model for the 2021. Mixed beverage, right now, we can't predict that. The city does receive, I think, 3,000 or 4,000 revenue each year from that. 4,000 a quarter. So we do see a little bit of revenue from those, but those are unpredictable right now because some of the restaurants that have bars are currently closed or have been closed. So that's a little difficult to tell. As I've indicated here, staff will continue to monitor the next three months for possible changes before the 2021 budget is adopted. Next page, we'll talk about franchise fees. Franchise fees are traditionally considered the use of right-of-way fees collected from CPS for electric and gas, various phone, fiber optic companies, cable providers. Last year, 2019 Texas Legislature adopted Senate Bill H. 1152. It amended, it basically was allowed for less for municipalities to collect. So it is going to make a difference slightly as far as the money coming in from these franchise fees. For instance, Southwestern Bell Telephone Company, largest fee lost was 24,000. Other various fees from providers, phone, cable, probably see a decrease of about 8,000 overall from those. We are looking at about 508,000 based on that estimate for the 2021 adopted budget, I mean, proposed budget. Excuse me. Next page, this gets into court revenue. Obviously, this is fluctuating as well because we've had court close for a few months. I know Judge McCall has now recently been doing a number of Zoom documents. I think even as early as maybe April and some in May, but primarily through the month of June and July have been done on the Zoom docket. We've also not necessarily decreased our traffic enforcement, but our officers haven't been out on the traffic side, nor has there been a lot of people out traffic-wise because they've been staying at home. So some of those factors are looking as far as the court. We hoping by the end of the year, if you look at the table, the five-year average of 860, we adopted a total revenue potentially of 945. We're hoping and projecting right now, close to 830,000. Preliminary 2021, we're looking at 881, which looks at about an overall just decrease of about 115,000. The five-year average and impact of pandemic, the current revenue is estimated, again, at 115,000. We looked at combining the step, the traffic enforcement, line item, court and income. It's not really accurate right now, generated from this program. So we're looking to align those. Again, based on the five-year average decrease, 63,987 impact of the pandemic could be an additional amount. The next page, we're getting into permits, fees, inspections. Residential fee schedule significantly altered in August 2019 due to legislation. If you recall, the state law changes made residential, the methodology go to a square footage. Whereas before, we were using value for both residential and commercial. State law changed, so all cities. And if you recall, some members on council, back in December, we had to bring the fee schedule that orientates towards now square footage. So there might be not necessarily less permits, but probably less revenue on the residence, residential side because of that configuration now. But we hope, we'll continue to monitor, see if that's an impact. Fees need additional revisions for residential permits, as I mentioned. Projecting a decrease in current budgeted revenue numbers due to that legislation and fewer commercial permits. Number of permits pooled are remaining constant in comparison to prior years. Like I said, the numbers are at the same for residential, commercial permits. It's just, it's just that total revenue is decreasing to a certain extent because of that new methodology. And final 2021 permit projection is still to be determined. So if you look at the five-year average, again, we're about 326,000. Last year, the budgeted amount was 275. And we're projecting only 125,000 potentially revenue at the end of the year. Okay. Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Vigans. And we are also looking for other ways. And between Chief Ladwig and Mr. Zamorone and Ms. Vigans, we are looking at other cities on how they are including and revising their fee schedule because we're not accounting for fire plan review costs, fire inspection, and certificate of obligation costs. So we're looking to add and incorporate those like other cities are doing to generate that revenue as well. So that's also a possible added element that we can increase revenue in that area. Mr. Gregory?
I'm surprised at one line here, certificate of occupancy. Why is it so low? I know there's some people in the city who think we ought to get rid of certificates of occupancy. I'm not one of them. But why is it so low? In fact, it's zero in one or two or three of these years. You got the Wedgwood coming on or whatever they're calling themselves. Doesn't that have to get a CFO?
They will require a CFO, but you know, the cost of their permitting process and inspections has encompassed that cost to us. You know, no, no real initial cost to the CFO. Louis, did you have a point? I'm sorry.
Good evening. Good evening. That's a good question, sir. And the fire chief has actually done some extensive investigation for some of the fees that other fire departments charge for false alarms, for inspections or pre-inspections, maybe even a consulting-type environment, where the fire chief has to go out and do that. And we're basically kind of losing a little bit of money compared to other citizens, or other cities, I'm sorry. But in our conversation earlier, the chief also told me that he was doing his analysis of different cities. And it's a very good point that other cities are charging significantly more on their CFO end to cover things like pre-CO inspections. Some cities are charging quite a bit for that. Basically, a consultant fee that you're using a city employee for free. And other cities have taken into consideration their charging. There's also re-inspections on the CFOs that we're not collecting for. That's, that's kind of zeroing it out. It's almost making it negligible on the CFO part. And that's something that we are looking at. We do have a look-back period, and I was actually going to recommend to the city manager tomorrow that based on the chief's investigation, that we do have a look-back period onto the way the fee structures were scheduled last year. We did need a period of time to look back to see what other cities were doing. The legislation caught everybody off guard and we're kind of winging it, if you will. But that time has gone. And now we're in the process, or we're in a position to be able to look back with the measurable amount of time that's passed. COVID's thrown everything off. We were going to do a six-month look-back, but COVID's thrown everything off. And it kind of works in our favor because we're coming up on a year of when this fee schedule was adopted. So we can actually look back at the other cities that the chief has actually looked really deep at other places, more than just the three or four we normally do. And it would appear, at least on initial evaluation, that there is significant room to increase the fees to keep competitive with other cities.
Thank you, Mr. Zamorone.
And I think what Mr. Zamorone referred to is we have a lot of meetings that are kind of pre-conference, pre-construction. And part of that's a courtesy to sit down with, you know, the fire chief and his expertise and our third-party building inspector to sit down. But we could actually charge for those services before they're submitting their plans as far as, again, using the chief's expertise in a certain area or Mr. Beeler, when he attends those pre-construction meetings as well. I think that's what you're alluding to, right, Louis?
That's part of, that's part of it, sir.
Yeah.
Pre-construction is a different animal completely because we do have folks that come in who are picking the fire chief's brain. They're picking my brain to the intricacies of the code and also with our outsourced engineering firms, because there's more than one that we use depending on the size of the project. But that's actually separate from the CFO process. The CFO process is basically the icing on the cake. You're about ready to open. But a lot of folks, especially on the commercial side, they kind of get the pre-opening jitters. And so they really start hammering on the fire chief to come out and making sure their Ts are crossed and their Is are dotted for free. And that's just not the case with other cities.
And that's been pretty extensive with this ensemble because of the comprehensiveness of that project. But we want to be able to capture things. And again, we should be in line with what other cities are doing, especially in the building, construction, and permitting side that we're making sure. And again, if there's another area that we can obtain revenue because of a loss in one, then we need to be doing what other cities do.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand, you've been waiting patiently.
Thanks. Since we had the break there, I wanted to go back one slide just to make sure I understand something on court revenue. So the court income 2021 projected there, am I reading that correctly? So the court income 2021 projected there, am I reading that correctly? That number is basically flat on court income, but is rolling the step dollars into it. Is that where the 728 is coming from?
The 728?
728, 444.
Up here. Yes. So the step line item. So what happens, it's an accounting entry that's been occurring at the city. It's not a normal entry in any other city. It's new to me when I got here. The court income for tickets that were considered a step ticket with the officers are doing traffic enforcement is being set aside to keep, to figure out how much that revenue was generated. The problem was that we're only, we were moving the entire amount of the ticket, which includes the state fees, the special revenue funds for technology, et cetera. So it wasn't changing the bottom dollar, but it is changing. It just wasn't representing what it really is. It's higher than it really is for the court income for step. So we're just putting it all into income. If we want to know about step, we can run reports through Brazos based on tickets that are issued for step program.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood where that figure was coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vigance. Okay, Mr. Rapley, please continue.
Okay. Any questions, any on the permitting side, anything, Mr. Isbrand? Are we good? I'll start with the residential garbage fees. Residential garbage fee rates have not increased here in Castle Hills since 2010. However, in back in far as 2015 and what we've done in researching, each year, different fees associated with the landfill have gone up. And we've tried to adjust those in the last two budgets, but the landfill fees continue to go up. Disposal, environmental fee, surcharge, regulatory recovery, wastewater management fee, TCEQ fee. So those all encompass the fee we get from waste management for our landfill services. And so we've already asked about the possibility, like for instance wastewater management fee, that percentage is going to go up 6.5% from 4.75 to per ton 2020. So we're trying to adjust accordingly to the cost of the landfill that waste management provides us. If you look at the slides here, this just gives you the total tonnage here, the loads, landfill payments, and then the potential increase here, which is estimated year end 2020 being over that 10%.
Ryan, I'm going to stop you real quick. Mr. Isbrand, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Rapley, do we make any money off of recycling?
So I can answer that because that was my comment, but I don't think we recycle enough, which is one of the things that I think we as a council need to look at as a recycling initiative to offset our landfill fees.
So to answer your question, Councilman, that we are subsidizing it basically.
We do get a small money from recycling and we have been recycling, taking quite a bit of tonnage and we are the wrong direction because they're not paying enough.
Well, I guess that's the question I think I'm really asking. Are we losing money by recycling? Are we having to incur costs to recycle and not, not only not generating income, but actually generating expense?
I haven't calculated what the recycling tonnage that we're taking and what it would have been if we took it to the landfill. There is a possibility, but we are paying a separate invoice that's not part of this number that's in this chart for recycling.
But more than likely, the expense outweighs the income coming in.
It's going to cost, yeah. The income, we get just a few hundred dollars and the bill can be several thousands. Right now, it hasn't been for several years. There's not, it's for the environment. It's for the good. There's not a benefit money wise.
Thank you, Ms. Vigance. Mr. Gregory?
During the last recession, prior to the great recession, we were getting a nice check every month coming in from recycling. The recession turned around to where we were having to pay money out. So unless it can be demonstrated, we prove that this depression, whatever you want to call what we're in right now, is different from last recessions, depressions, I would guess we're losing money significantly if we recycle. And that's just the economics of it, I think. I don't have any figures at all of the present what it is, but I think that's probably the situation.
From what I've heard and from what I've seen, basically if we were to be recycling more, we could potentially make money and lower our landfill fees. So that is something that Mr. Rapley and I have talked about potentially exploring a recycling initiative to lessen our carbon footprint and save the city some money. Mr. Isbrand, you have another comment?
Just a follow up question to you, Mayor, on that. So is there any modeling that has been done to this point that would indicate to us what exactly it would take in terms of trying to increase recycling in order to reduce the cost?
So to answer your question, no modeling has been done. One of the things that I was thinking of and aligned with the initiative would be to get more residents recycling bins. A lot of people don't know that we recycle. Actually had several people reach out to me and ask me why we didn't recycle. And I reminded them that we do. So something along those lines would help. But I would agree, before we went any further, we would need to do a model to make sure that it's financially feasible and it's a benefit to the city.
Historically, recycling has not been popular in Castle Hills. It was initially about 20 years ago. And the bins at that time cost people $5 for a bin and I think $5 for a cover. And enthusiasm immediately went downhill over the pursuing years. I don't know why. People were just using the recycling bin as another garbage can. But you really have to, I don't know how you generate interest in people to recycle. I just don't know. But historically, it's never been overwhelmingly embraced in Castle Hills. It may be different now.
I think that there is a different demographic that's moving into Castle Hills. It's a little more earth conscious. And I think if we can market to them and push that, that we might be able to benefit and lessen our carbon footprint.
It works. Try it.
Mr. Isbrand?
Yeah, and I'm by no means suggesting that we shouldn't try to recycle or that it isn't a good thing. I just simply have the question of, I've seen in municipalities before where they were actually incurring significant costs in the name of recycling. And if we're, if we're looking at the need to possibly, you know, find new revenue streams, that we would understand exactly what it would take, or as best we can, to understand what it would take to raise the level of participation before we invested in going down that path of whatever it may be to try to address those landfill costs.
Absolutely.
And again, you know, when we talk about the landfill fees, I mean, that's just being passed on to the consumer for, you know, to us as a city. And then of course, we have our service to the residents fee. So again, and I'll get into the next slide, but it'll show that, you know, that, you know, our garbage fees associated for services may not be in line for the cost of what it is at the landfill from that standpoint. So it's something that, you know, I know in the last two budgets, we've looked at as far as the need to make sure that we are paying for the cost to go to the landfill that, you know, that they're, they balance out essentially. I've said here, since I've been here as a sanitation here, that this should be running as an enterprise fund from that standpoint. So we should be utilizing our sanitation fund as an enterprise fund where you're making a little bit more over than your expected expenses. And you're, like we are doing now, we are running our services and operations out of that fund. And a lot of cities that have an enterprise fund, they buy equipment out of that. So if we could get to one one day, that would be great. Right now, it's just included in the general fund for operations under sanitation. So, but I'll go to the next slide. And what we put here is a residential garbage fee. So what we want to show you is obviously they haven't been increased in 10 years. But you look at for $25 a month, plus the sales tax, you get garbage twice a week. You get leaf collection once a week. You get brush once a week and you get recycling once a week. And, you know, there's a lot of cities that aren't even doing recycling, that don't even do brush but twice a year. But we're providing these services at this cost. And so, you know, the point I'm trying to make is we have a lot of services for this cost that we may not be paying exactly for that particular expense because a lot of cities do outside collection for brush or leaf collection outside of their, their cycle. But we provide it once a week. Councilman Isbrand, sorry.
Mr. Isbrand?
Yeah, sorry. I don't mean to be garbage obsessed here and asking all these questions. But that 8.25% sales tax, is any portion of that coming to us or is all of this going to the state?
Yeah, there's just a portion that would be dedicated to the city that would go right into our sales tax, crime control and street maintenance, sorry.
It goes to crime, crime control as well?
It's just a portion of sales tax that come in that's the city's, you know, out of that 8.25.
Yeah, the state gets the six and a half and then the remainder is split between the city, the streets and then the crime control. So, yeah, we get a little portion of it back, just like any, it's just the normal sales tax on any, just like any product somebody would buy in our city.
Answer to your question is about one and a half percent of the eight and a half percent comes back to Castle Hills for one thing or another, either street tax or crime control prevention. The rest goes to VIA and all other, the other entities around the city, the county and the state.
And thank you for that clarification. But and the reason I ask is because I think it's worth pointing out if we're arguing that the, the garbage fee hasn't gone up in years and years and years and it's $25. It's really not $25. It's $25 plus that 1.25% in sales tax that's coming back to us. So I think it's important to kind of understand actually what the city is generating if we're, when we talk about collection fees.
Yeah, and I'm strictly from, like I mentioned on the last slide, we're talking about total tonnage. And, you know, I'll just revert real quick back to the last slide, but the June 2020 had 1,404 tons. And, you know, we have here currently due to pandemic, there'd be significant increase in tonnage per month. Obviously, more people staying home consumption wise. So we are going to see a slightly larger cost expense from the landfill standpoint to the city each month moving forward. And anyways, but I'm sorry, Councilman Isbrand, I'm sorry. Did you have more questions?
No, no, thank you.
But what I was trying to make a point again is we have these array of services here for this particular cost. And so at some point, we're going to have to look at how we do some type of rate study to make sure that we are meeting our expenses for the cost of service. And as I said, recycling is essentially subsidized in this process once a week for regular collections. And how we try to reduce that tonnage, like the mayor had mentioned, would be an ultimate goal because it's less the city's paying at the landfill.
Any idea, Ryan, how, how this compares to other cities?
Not particularly. I don't know if we've, we've gone, because a number of cities, you know, we have our municipalized services. We have public works. We have our guys. We have our trucks. A lot of smaller cities like us, and we can, we can get that information, are contracted. So they may have waste management or
Tiger.
Tiger. They have a contracted residential service collection with those cities. And I believe that they're not twice a week. They may be once a week from that aspect. So it's a good thing for us in Castle Hills, but we just want to make sure that we are, are making sure it's, we're paying for it correctly. You know, based on the expense. Yes, sir.
Made the observation that, first of all, we're in a real tough economic situation right now. And I'd be loath to raise these fees. However, there is a way that is palatable to a lot of taxpayers. And previous councils have shot down my proposal several different times. Is there a way to put this, the garbage fee into the total tax that we charge homeowners? So they can at least deduct through the property tax, the garbage you cannot. There's no way to do that.
No. And, and well, and it is subsidized by your property tax right now.
What I'm saying is can you add, have that? This is what I was told several years ago, you could.
No, there was, there is a, something to do with landfills. We don't have a landfill. It's part of your property tax calculation. That's, but no.
There's no way to increase the property taxes
No.
in the fact that you put the fee that you're already paying in the property tax.
So off the top of my head, the only thing I could think of is if the property tax rate goes up and we just do the trash service for free.
Then it would just be in your property tax, correct? And then you could take that on your, when you file your taxes.
At least you'd be able to deduct it on your taxes.
But we're talking.
The problem with that would be you'd have to find somebody then. I don't think Bear County collections that they would be willing to collect the money in the funds for us, which was what goes on now through our
I think the point is that you would just collect a little bit more property taxes and the trash service would be free.
So revenue we bring in, well, I say revenue, we're bringing in revenue of 455,000. So you would have to supplement that through your tax rate, which would be, take that, I have to figure that in my head.
I guess the only concern is that the property values fluctuate, whereas the trash service is constantly going to go up.
If I remember, excuse me, if I remember correctly, two or three years ago, it seems to me like council brought forth and it was only like two or three, I think it was in 18, you were on. And it seems to me like it was only $2 or $3 additional to add to it, which would at least get us so we break even on our expense. And so, and I thought it was going to go through for some reason it didn't. But yeah, there's several factors here. You got increased cost. We got to cover it some way or are we going to run deficit in this area, run deficit in that area? Sooner or later, it's got to be paid.
Well, I think it's one of the, the things we don't promote enough, that we have this particular service at this low cost for living here in Castle Hills. But as part of this process and looking at it, and as Councilman Joyce had mentioned, we can look at other cities. I mean, typically in this situation, you'd want to do a rate study and look at this every five years to make sure you're compatible for your expense for the revenue coming in. But I, you know, as we move forward, I wasn't looking to bring forward a rate increase, at least this year in the sanitation. But I think looking at other cities, we can, we can bring that to council to say, here's what X, Y and Z cities are doing. But again, it may be a difference because they're contracting that service out versus in-house or municipalized what we do.
And they're subject to any increases that those contractors wish to bring to the city.
Yes. One, one of the other issues that we've realized with trash services is that many of them are automated with machines. And we wouldn't be able to continue with alley service for many of the houses.
One thing I'm sure of, the citizens of this, this city want public works the way we have it. They want their, and I understand that. And we have a great crew and a great organization. And it's our job, in my opinion, to do everything we can to keep that on track.
Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, on the slide here, I have possible options to cover costs. And as below, you know, we're projecting that, you know, based on the revenue coming in at the end of the year, we're at 450,000. We're kind of estimating the year end at 541,000, which puts us at a negative 86,000. An alternative to looking at the fees or raising the garbage fees may look to cover costs in other areas. Possibly adopt a franchise fee on commercial trash providers, increase those residential rates, charge for all brush or leaf collection, charge for the front door pickup, determine if any fees can be negotiated at a lower weight, lower rate. And I think that's what in reference to Um, determine if any fees can be negotiated at a lower weight, lower rate, and I think that's what in reference to possibly uh, the landfill, but. Um, I think we've talked to them before about doing some type of agreement, but. Uh, they, they do their, obviously their fees and they change on a yearly basis based on the service. So that's probably not something that we'd want to go. Um, I know, Mayor, you had mentioned the, uh, looking at the franchise fees. Um, so that's something we can do to maybe incur uh, the additional revenue, which would be um. From our commercial businesses here in Castle Hills.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Isbrand, you have a comment?
I, a question on that notion of the franchise fee for commercial providers. So do we have any sense of what other municipalities are doing and what kind of revenue it might generate?
Okay, so. A lot of the other cities, they get the, they have a, a sole provider, so like if they're, they have waste management, they pick up the commercial and residential. You don't have a choice as a commercial business to go through another provider for a dumpster. So there's a franchise fee that's um, in that contract that's where that, and it's exclusive. So since we don't have that, we could actually do a franchise fee that every provider that comes to the city that picks up commercial. Would have to come get an agreement with us, an approved financial, right, excuse me, franchise agreement. And it's anywhere from eight to eleven percent is what they usually are, but what kind of revenue that would generate for us? I don't have any way to really kind of have that information because we don't have one provider in the city. I can't pick up phone and ask. You know, uh, waste management, what their commercial businesses are paying them here and because it's not just waste management, there's lots of them, so.
So potentially with agreement in place, it could be an additional.
It could be significant.
Eight to eleven percent increase uh, in revenue that would generate that.
Yeah, it could, I mean, it could be, you know, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars based on, I mean, we have a lot of commercials here, so.
But if we're, if we're exploring other cities on the residential side, we can inquire about that commercial and some of the surrounding cities.
Inquire um, through my G F O I T and only two people responded, but most of the cities, again, it's. They have one provider, that's what they said. Well, that's because they're, they're just getting it with their, coming back from that one provider because that's the only one they have. This would be, City of Houston is one good example. They have a franchise fee that allows any provider to provide commercial. They come get their franchise agreement agreed, comes through council and they have to follow all the guidelines of. They're not picking up the dumpsters like they're supposed to, or there's anything, you could pull their franchise and they could not be in your city anymore. So it actually might help in some kind of code enforcement issues, even having that franchise option.
Councilman Isbrand?
Well, and, and I just wonder aloud that if um, we, we were to implement something like that, it might in fact. Take some pressure off of our uh, residential um, customers, if you will. So that we don't have to uh, be talking about potentially raising um, fees on them, but in fact, might. Actually be able to look at a way to reduce or, you know, maintain fees as they currently are.
Mm-hmm, yep. I, that's, I have mentioned this before and I, I think this would be your first, first way to go to see what you could get from that.
You know, I think one of the, the hallmarks of our city are the municipal services we provide. And I think there's a great appreciation for our public works department and for the sanitation workers that do all this. Um, I think people though probably wonder sometimes what their property taxes are going for, if on top of that, there's a trash tax. And then there's a, a sales tax on the trash tax. Um, and then we're talking about the possibility of having to either raise that tax. Or to limit um, the number of days or the frequency of collection versus looking at uh, some of these alternatives like this. That for lack of a better phrase, would uh, spread the pain out a little bit if we uh, engaged at the commercial level there.
One other point to add is that, well, we have trash service twice a week. Um, it's also practical for our sanitation workers because it makes it a little bit easier for them. If they were to only collect once a week, it's doubling the load that they're going to have to be dragging and or throwing in the back of the truck and. That's just making their life a little bit harder, uh, obviously going to slow productivity, a whole different set of issues that it raises, something to be mindful of. Mr. Rappley?
Again, I just want to make sure from the sanitation side that we're, we're meeting the cost of doing business and um. Based on the array of services we provide our residents. Next, uh, I'll just kind of touch on some of the remaining revenue. Um, we have false alarm fee, uh, fines, uh, restitution fees. Uh, report fees, the fingerprints, revenue, rescue, miscellaneous uh, credit card fees. Um, we have towing service impound lot. Um, and I think that uh, I'll wait for, you know, the police chief to go over his presentation. To talk about the possibility of doing an interlocal agreements with another municipality. That would uh, generate some uh, increase of revenue on that side, but I'll let him uh, touch on that in his presentation to council. Um, interest, we saw a slight decrease. We're projecting about fifteen thousand next year for twenty twenty one. Uh, passport acceptance fees, you know, prior to the pandemic, we were on pace for about forty five thousand. Um, we actually, um, I think the first year we, we have, we, we budgeted twenty one thousand, I believe. We made twenty five, twenty six thousand, so we moved it up this year to about thirty five. And for the first three months, we were on pace for this forty five thousand. Um, we are still, still getting calls asking if we're doing passports right now, so um, not sure where everybody's going, but. Um, we are thinking about um, moving that open to um, with all the safety precautions in place. By appointment only, um, and, and we'll have everyone and we could talk about that further, but we think we're going to start that process by appointment only. To get that going again, because we've had a lot of inquiry, inquiries and um, you know, that is one portion that we are losing revenue right now. So I think based on the things in place, the safety precautions and the social distancing guidelines, we can do this by appointment. Um, you know, starting as early as maybe uh, next week or the following week. Uh, the next page, preliminary revenue summary. This would just wanted to highlight the revenue from two thousand twenty and then show you obviously what we're looking at from a preliminary standpoint for two thousand twenty one. Obviously, it's, it's, it's sort of uh, fluctuate and moving right now because, you know, we don't know what the economy or, or the local economy will look like. Uh, due to pandemic and, and uh, sales tax and other fees that uh, are income that the city receives, so. We just have a starting point that we wanted to use our baseline moving forward uh, for next year when we start putting together the proposed budget. Is there any questions on the revenue summary?
These figures total. Almost a half a million dollars. We're actually expecting a loss of a half a million dollars in revenue?
Well, as it stands right now, if we. If we don't receive the income that we projected by the end of the year at or slightly below, then this is what it looks like right now. This is kind of the basic landscape right now. We're hoping again, you know, businesses continue to be open. We hope that permitting continues. We start doing some passports again. Uh, we hope that court will start, um, court is already operating, but the traffic side is going to be picking up pace here soon. Um, and I think again, we were just taking precautions on the traffic side because of the recent spikes. But um, as is and projecting, there could be this possibility, but we hope in the next four to five months. That there's an uptick on this projected revenue by the end of the year to decrease this deficit.
So Mr. Rappley?
I like this projection for one reason. So long ago by Mike Shands, who was the city, who was doing your job years ago. Always be very conservative with your figures of revenue coming in.
Well, I think.
Inevitably, or not as bad as you think, but he always did it that way and we were always pleasantly surprised. And I applaud your using that same methodology.
Well, I think we have to be pretty conservative because um, like I said in the previous slides, it's pretty fluid and it's, it's a little unpredictable right now and. You know, I'm not Nostradamus, but I just know that hopefully by this time next year that. Everything is on the upswing and, and bouncing back, hopefully. I'm optimistic that that is the case. Sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I don't know, that's, Mr. Gregory took the words out of my mouth.
Um, any other questions? Councilman Isbrand? Um, the next slide talks about additional budget items for future considerations. Um, and, and one thing I wanted to mention, uh, on the property tax, it says to be determined, so after July fifth. Um, we'll get the reports maybe a week or less from, from the appraisal and, and um, we'll get the tax rule and we'll have a better idea of what. That potential revenue looks like, and that's why it has to be determined right now, so, but we're hoping. You know, obviously it's a little higher than expected. Uh, sorry, again, going back, property tax rate assumptions, no new revenue tax rate. And voter approval tax rate. Uh, the old term, again, as we mentioned earlier, was effective in rollback rate. This is now how the new terms are stated for these particular tax rates moving forward. Um, the next line on a future COLA salary adjustments to be determined, obviously, you know, um. As you mentioned, Councilman Gregory, you know, looking at these projections, um, it. We always hope to have the revenue higher and project higher, but we also have to take into account that some of the things that we take for. Accounting as far as expensive, expenses may not be there next year. So we're just being cautious and we're seeing how the COLA turns out for our employees for the cost of living. Um, right now, we have no additional positions, just uh, built in or we will build in right now. Health insurance rerates, one of the things we wanted to do was look at our health insurance to find out if there's areas we can help. Our employee, if there's ways we can be looking uh, within our health insurance to help our employee to maybe bring down that potential cost. I don't think our health insurance has been analyzed in the last few years. Uh, I know we've looked at it, but I don't think it's heavily been looked and vetted outs in the past five or six years. To see if we're getting the best medical insurance for our employees and what they're paying per employee and cost. So I think we want to look at that because if we can look at the insurance right now and see if there's some potential benefits to per employee or. Employee child or employee family costs and we can bring that down a little bit, that might be an incentive in lieu of, of a COLA and a savings to our employees this year. Um, any questions on that particularly? I think council, uh, future capital equipment, uh, future capital projects. Uh, additional evaluation of expense and revenue line items and special revenue funds. So those are the kind of things we're looking at right now as we build the proposed budget for two thousand twenty one. Uh, then the next, next slide, council budget guidance.
Mr. Rappley?
Yes, sir.
Pardon me. Are we doing anything to address the growing unfunded liability that we have in this city? It's over two million dollars is my understanding.
Are, are you referring to in the?
In the budget.
The budget?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we.
Current to T M R S.
T M R S.
The funded liabilities that show, that shows up in the audit that comes from T M R S. I mean, we, we pay a rate that, that they. Um. That, that is, is supposed to be handling all of that. We could bring T M R S to come in and talk. I, I, the last time I looked, I haven't looked at the new. New rates, they just came out at the end of June and have not pulled that out. Um, but we are, we, we, we have not had to pay an additional amount to get us into the, on the good side, so. There's always going to be an unfunded liability. It's always going to be there.
Well, the unfunded liability with the state is one thing. The under, unfunded liability for the city is something else.
Again, it, again, we can bring T M R S to explain it. I mean, sure, if we want to try to give them more money to get that. Where it isn't there, you, the way the actuaries work, you, they, it's at a point in time today and so, and I'm not a T M R S expert. But, you know, you, over time, you, you're, all your employees are not going to stay and then retire. You have people that come and go and so that money fluctuates, people take their money out. You have people still paying when those other people are retiring and then, so there, there's always that unfunded liability is there, but.
But it's been growing in our city for some time, uh, because I remember we were down to zero several years ago.
Don't know that you, I don't know that any city was ever at zero.
We were, you, I, we were, this was under.
Well, again, council.
Anyway, I'm just saying it's growing.
It's something we can look at um, uh, from that standpoint.
I mean, we can look, bring T M R S and let them talk.
Like to have at least something in the budget to address it.
Not a problem. Um, like I said, council, the, the next slide is just kind of left open as far as council budget guidance. We wanted to. To kind of hear from uh, each council member if you had any ideas of, of things you'd like to see in the budget or, or um. Insight or desire about how we move forward from the proposed to adoption. Um, that's this, this time right here. We wanted to hear from y'all.
And so uh, we'll move on to item number four officially, council budget guidance and discussion. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Isbrand. Do you have any comments?
Well, there, there's lots of things I would love to see in the budget, but I think we all know the practicality, the reality of the circumstances that we're in. Um, right now that um, may prevent some of that. I do believe that as part of this process, it might be a worthy exercise to begin to look at some of our. Larger costs or expenses in not just the terms of the one year of the budget, but perhaps a, a two-year plan, if not more. Um, anticipating that because of the pandemic, we're going to have, you know, significant fluctuation this year. Perhaps in the next budget year, assuming that things were, were to get back to whatever normal will be at that point. That we could look at um, some, some larger or broader um, uh, opportunities there. I'm sure that each department is going to, you know, have its wishlist and I know that we would all like to ensure that our. City employees have all the tools and resources they need to accomplish their jobs, but again, this may not be the year that we're going to be able to do that. But taking into account what the opportunity might be to look at a two-year uh, process, if you will, that's not quite the right uh, phrase, phrase. But a two-year planning exercise um, to begin to consider what may need or is urgent to be uh, done this year. Versus what doesn't just fall off the table, but what perhaps could be delegated to something that we would revisit next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
Something specific?
Anything that's on your mind?
Well, I've kind of had heartburn over the last couple of years, what we've done to our uh, uh, public works department. And. We just need to get a clerk back over there to help do the job that needs to be taken care of. I can't tell you how many times I go over there just to, I make sure I go there at lunch because that's generally when I'll catch Rick. And he's eating his lunch there, doing paperwork. He'll come in on Sunday and do paperwork. Last week on Monday, I think it was, he's driving the, the garbage truck because somebody's not here. I mean. If, if we're a city, putting a clerk in there to help him with paperwork to me is minimum. On what you need because the question really is, what are we losing? What are we not doing? What's getting by us? And these are things that I think need to be looked at. And uh, we, I believe acted in haste a couple of years ago when we took actions on some things. And this is one of the things that is, is just giving me heartburn over the last couple of years, so uh, I'd like to see that looked at.
Yeah, I believe councilman, um, from that point, two years ago, I think. In Rick's department and the labor side had two additional employees and then the permit clerk itself and, you know, I've heard that before because. Rick and his guys are always out, whether it's sanitation or projects, they're out of the office and, and I've received, you know, hey, no one's there at public works and. You know, when the permit clerk was there, she was doing a lot of the administrative and actually there, when you come by and you need something from public works.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
What's on my mind uh, really is putting a high priority on our fire, our police, our city worker salaries. Uh, there's going to be some tightness. Everyone understands that, but what makes Castle Hills what it is and what brought most of us here. Was the quality of life and I think they are essential. And so that is my priority and that's what I'm thinking. The second thing I would say as to the budget is. The second thing I would say as to the budget is I would, I would advocate pushing forward on collaborative projects that have low cost, but high priority to the citizenry and the message we're sending to the broader community. One example, uh, I was fortunate to be here when, uh, Councilman Gregory was working on the parks and recreation and some of our, uh, plans that would expand the usefulness and maybe the square footage of places to, to go and bring families to rec, recreation or just to get away. And I think we can do that. Uh, and I have one more in my closing comments, but I'll save that, uh, for another particular project that will cost us virtually nothing.
Thank you, Councilman May. And, you know, again, when you talk about fire, police salaries that, you know, we do get those area surveys and we want, trying to stay competitive. And again, that's the, one of the reasons that bringing forward, you know, our fire chief salary to make sure that we are competitive with our other cities. And that's kind of why I did that earlier this year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Well, my wish is that, um, we could find a way to pay for all of the street and drainage stuff that we need, which is a cost of forty-five million bucks. I wish that there are a way that we could get that done on some schedule, all of it. And at the same time, have some room for other types of improvements. Uh, we've heard, and this is very informal, but we've heard from many folks about the need and desire for more parks. In some cases, uh, we've heard about the need for improvements in this building here, although we've made do for a long, long time. So the idea of capital projects, I think some capital planning money as well, I think would be very helpful. I understand that we know we have a lot of talent here and I think there's probably a way that we could use in-house talent to supplement professional talent to help keep the cost down. But I, I do think that we need some sort of budget for professional planning. And I also, second thing on my list then would be, um, with reference to economic development, uh, Councilman May and myself with Mr. Rappley's help, we're trying to figure out some way to begin sort of a, a business association of business leaders in Castle Hills and plan, we're trying to plan an event and we'd like to make it as attractive as we can to folks. And of course with proper social distancing and all that. But in terms of a budget for maybe a little snack or something like that, uh, of course it'd have to be done in a very specific way, but in, in discussing that with Mr. Rappley, it sounds like we have a certain budget for those kinds of things, but it's really the budget that is currently earmarked for our education with the T M O. And so, T M L, excuse me. And so if we had a little bit more money for those sorts of economic develop, development event money, maybe we could call it something like that. I think that would make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Gregory?
Well, two things off the top of my-
Mr. Gregory, can you use your microphone?
Two things off the top of my head, I think we, I'm very concerned about unfunded liabilities. It's, it's growing and this is what can stifle a city. We're doing projects like Mr. Joyce is talking about and Mr. May, if we're putting, if we have to pay a lot more money for unfunded liabilities. The second thing is something that, that has been talked about in this city as far back as I can remember, and that's a leaf sweeper. Uh, people have asked me about leafs. We actually had one person who lived here who was going to give five thousand dollars to the city toward the purchase of a leaf sweeper. That was fifteen years ago. He's now dead. We have no leaf sweeper. It seems to me a leaf sweeping money and I, I'd like, you'd have to get a legal opinion on this. Could we use the, the, the street money to buy a leaf sweeper? Uh, I wonder whether or not, since that is directly addressing upkeep of streets, whether or not it could be done. If it's not, I think we ought to look into whether we ought to lease it or buy them because I think that would go a long way for, uh, keeping the streets from deteriorating as rapidly as they do. And, but it's actually been something that people have come up to me and asked about. And it's been a consistent thing over the years and it's never been addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Uh, you know, I, I want to be sensitive to everything that's going on in the world and specifically as it relates to additional fees and while they might not be a lot individually, cumulatively, they can add up. And I think that was something we need to be mindful of, especially if there's going to be a, uh, increase in the property tax rate, considering the, the loss that we took last year. So I would incur, encourage council to be considerate of that. On the revenue side, I would like to look into the commercial trash service, uh, franchise fee and see what we can do there. And the billboards, I've talked to the several vendors and they're eager and anxious to, uh, submit proposals for additional sites to specifically. Hopefully we can continue going forward and continue providing premium city services for Castle Hills. That being said, if nobody has any to show comments, we'll proceed to, uh, announcements by Mr. Rappley?
Uh, just real quick, on the next slide, obviously that's the, the, the budget calendar, the next steps, the meetings and what we'll be doing. So Tuesday, July twenty-first, six-thirty, uh, we'll hear from the fire department and Public Works and, um, you know, hopefully as part of that is Councilman Isbrand mentioned about, um, planning that, you know, you'll hear from the departments about multi-year plans and needs that they may have, so we can plan accordingly. If there's things that can't be, uh, purchased or, or done in this year, hopefully in the next year, we can get the, the tools and the, um, the, uh, what the departments need basically, um, in a more prosperous year, I guess you'd say.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Uh, now accounts, announcements by Mayor and City Council on items of community interests. Mr. Isbrand?
Um, thank you, Mayor and council members. I'd like to take the opportunity to express my appreciation and to commend, uh, Mayor Trevino for his work with Bear County and with our other partners in bringing the free COVID nineteen testing into our city, obviously serving more than our city, but bringing it as close as possible to our community. I think this was a remarkable effort. Um, as we were coming into this meeting tonight, I got an email from a resident who said they just tried to sign up for tomorrow and all the appointments are now taken. So they're moving to Saturday. And I think it's just a real testament to the kind of service that we can bring to our community. And I'm very grateful for the relationship that this city and in particular the work that Mayor Trevino is doing to really develop and nurture the relationships that we have with the county, with our neighboring communities, um, to do really substantial things to help serve our community and those around us. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
I'm fine. I just like the way that, um, Councilman Isbrand put that forth, and I think that's very good. Thank you, sir. Brought the light to the benefits that your efforts and things that, with this, uh, testing. And, uh, but that's why I'll-
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
I'm not sure the Castle Hills reporter, the next edition is out, but I just wanted to get a preview. I proposed in my segment that we initiate the process of having a Castle Hills Historical Society founding. Now, this would have to be citizen centric. Uh, I'm putting it out there with contact information so I can start getting information back. It would be in two parts. Historical preservation would be the main goal, and that would be preserving memory, providing documentation, and ultimately perhaps a publication. And the second part would be historic celebration. We're coming up to two significant dates. Twenty twenty-one is the seventieth, uh, anniversary of our founding. Twenty twenty-six, of course, is the seventy-fifth. If we don't plan now, pandemic or no pandemic, we're not going to have any celebration or any kind of documentation. So I'm putting it out there to the residents to respond. Rather than watching that thousandth episode on Netflix, maybe this would be a good time to get down to the preservation of your next door neighbor's mem, remembrance of what it was like when they came to town forty years ago. And all of this can be done online. It can be done telephonically, but I'm just putting it out there. I know we don't have a large audience here tonight, but, uh, it'll hit the reporter and I wanted everyone to be given a heads up. And in the same report, uh, in my writing, I did commend every one of the persons that are sitting here tonight and the mayor. And I just feel so privileged to work on a team that seems to be poised to fire on all cylinders. So thank you. I feel privileged for that.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would simply like to, I guess, invite our public to participate in any way they can in these upcoming budget workshops. Because we're talking about, uh, obviously many, many dollars and all of us, and we've heard emphasized a number of times how important our services are and what it means to be in Castle Hills, and we want to preserve that and make it even better. And so if we can have ideas from the public on these upcoming workshops, which I believe are published, um, that would be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Um, Mr. Gregory?
I too wanted to congratulate you for this COVID testing problem here and tomorrow. I don't plan to do it, but I know there, there are a lot of people who did and I wanted to tip my hat to you. I think that was a nice little coup. Uh, second to Mr. May, check out Richard Green. My God, if there's anybody who knows what everything has gone on in this city since David Crockett lived, he would, he would know it. But be prepared, you got to sit down for a long, long talk. And, uh, I look forward to the next meeting next week and, um, regular council meeting.
Thank you, council. Uh, in line with what everybody's mentioned as far as the testing, I, I think it's a huge opportunity for the city of Castle Hills to be the center of focus through all of Bear County, especially providing free testing for everybody. And to Mr. Isbrand's point, the spots were completely full and there were over six hundred tests, uh, that were scheduled for Friday. Hopefully we'll have another six hundred that become available to be registered for tonight, late tonight, if not tomorrow morning. And I've already talked to, uh, my contacts at Bear County and they're willing to do another round of testing if everybody shows up, which, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that people will. Uh, so they'll be getting set up tomorrow morning. Uh, lastly, I am touched, proud, happy, uh, you know, and, and part of my talks with Bear County, I was able to secure some surgical masks for our businesses and, uh, specifically the high contact businesses. And I reached out to all the council members individually and everybody said that they would be willing to help distribute those masks. And that is, uh, one of the first times that I can remember that this council has come together to do something positive and everybody's taking it on their own to do it individually for the community. So I want to thank you all for your willingness to serve not only here, but outside of these chambers. Hopefully council members can start passing those masks out, uh, this coming week. And if you are watching and interested in receiving masks, uh, please reach out to one of us so that we can stop by. We'll go from there. Thank you all so much for a good evening. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. May?
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. All in favor? Unanimous. Have a good evening, council.